Good morning. I'm Senator Kathy Sharon and this is Representative Clark Johnson. Jack Honsedine, who is your new representative-elect, is taking some time this morning to recover from the election, so he's not going to be with us this morning. But he says hello and is very happy and wants to welcome our presenters here to our area to answer questions as we move forward to renew our health insurance policies. I would like, I'm going to introduce our presenters today, but first I just wanted you to know that, as you know, I periodically have what we call informational sessions in the Mankato area, especially around healthcare issues because I chair the Health and Human Services Committee. But there may be other informational hearings about those things that I think you should have direct information about and be able to ask questions about to be fully informed. These forums are tended to be about gathering accurate information. It's not a political forum. It's not a debate. It is about gathering accurate information. So that, I want to put that in context today. Both Representative Johnson and I understand that part of our role, once elected through a partisan process, is to carry out the responsibility of keeping our constituency informed and able to have the information they need to conduct their lives well. And that's what these informational forums are about. We are really happy to have, I'm just so grateful on a Saturday morning to pull these wonderful leaders that work for the state of Minnesota to Mankato. They had to take a trip down from St. Paul on their day off in order to be here to have an opportunity to answer your questions. So because of that extraordinary effort on their heart, we are taping this session. We will need to use the microphone to be able to hear your questions in order for those who watch later to be able to know what it is that's being asked and what the answer relates to. And if we can't accomplish that without a lot of difficulty, then we'll have Clark repeat the question and then the audience that listens to this later will be able to hear what it is that we're talking about. So I will introduce our speakers in a minute and what our agenda is, but I wanted to give Representative Johnson a chance to speak to you as well.
Well, thank you Senator Sharon, and thank you all of you for coming. This is, I'm a part of the Democratic Party and this is the way it works where citizens get involved in questions and we bring in the officials to answer those questions. My compliments to Senator Sharon for putting this together. I think there's, based on, I think we all know there's a lot of challenges with MinSure and the changes in healthcare. There's a lot going on and we deal with that best when we learn about it and we get good, straight answers and the content will do that today. So I look forward to learning a lot along with you and both learning from the experts but also learning more about the concerns that you have and what you need to know. So this is a great learning opportunity for me as well.
Thank you. I think that what Clark was saying about our learning, both of us are going to be learning today from your questions. When I'm in a forum like this, I listen to the questions that are being asked because it orients me to where the confusion is or where we haven't been clear enough or where we maybe haven't focused enough attention to solve the problem. So, and I know that all of our administrative staff here do the same thing. The questions are valuable because they tell us a lot about how we're doing our job, whether or not we're effective in communicating. So do not hesitate to offer a question or worry about the nature of your question. We really need that information. And I know that as you came in, we had some pieces of paper to allow you to write down what your questions might be. We can pass out some more if you need them or we can use the microphone. You know, if somebody wants to raise their hand and ask a question, that's fine. So what we're going to do today is start out with Commerce. We have with us from Commerce Deputy Commissioner Tim Van Dehe, and we also have from the Peter --
Peter Brickwady.
Peter Brickwady from, who is the Commerce Legislative Liaison. This is the person who interfaces with those of us in the legislature. So we're really, really happy to have a Deputy Commissioner here. I mean, if you stump him with a question, there'll be a prize at the end. Yes. I want to introduce also, would you please stand? This was the person who first came today, was the first arrival, and she won a prize, which is that she gets to ask the first question. So, she's delighted to hear that. So with Commerce, what I'm hoping that we'll hear a little bit of a presentation, what I've asked from them is to talk a little bit about how we do this in Minnesota, a little bit about how that's different from other states because we have, the Commerce Department review insurance policies. Anybody can purchase them, can sell a policy in Minnesota contrary to popular belief. But those insurance companies have to meet certain criteria that we establish in order to make certain products that you're buying actually cover something and that there's actually money to be able to pay those bills at the end of the time. So I'm asking Commerce to talk about how is our system sort of set up? How are those insurance policies reviewed? And then, what do they look at each year when those insurance companies come in with their products, the different products they want to sell to you, to make sure that they cover what they're supposed to and that they have established rates in a fair way so that they're not overcharging, but they are also justifying their charges? You may not know this, but the Public Utilities Commission serves a similar function. It's not exactly the same because those kinds of meetings are open. But the Public Utilities Commission also reviews requests from the power companies for their right to increase your power rates. So this is a system that we use, a check and balance to make certain that consumer protection occurs for you in the process of reviewing these health insurance policies. So I've asked them to talk a little bit about that. Then, once those products come in, what do they look at? What are they looking at? What's driving the rates? Because during this last election, you heard a lot of conversation about my rates are going up this much or my rates are going down this much or this or that. And so I thought it was important for us to learn about what is driving rates, what is actually creating the drivers for the rates and how does Commerce actually work to make certain that the rates are set in a reasonable and fair way. So that's generally what I'm hoping that we will hear from Commerce in just a little bit of a presentation and then get to some questions on that subject. Then we're going to move on and talk about MinSure itself. We have the Chief Executive Officer for MinSure, this is amazing, Scott Lights, he's right over here. We had a lot of rollout problems with MinSure. We had a change in the Chief Executive Officer. Scott has worked in various roles in the Department of Human Services for a long time. He's absolutely fabulous, knows these healthcare systems inside and out. So there'll be another prize if you're able to stump Scott Lights with a question, you know. He may not have the right, the best answer, he may not like the answer he has to give you on your question, but he should be able to really inform us today about what's happening. And then we have the interim Assistant Commissioner Nathan Morocco from the Department of Human Services. So we will also be taking a look at all of the wonderful programs that the state of Minnesota offers for persons who have disabilities or have limited income and how they interface with MinSure itself. And I want you to know that I've been in the legislature now eight years. When I first started in the legislature, we were struggling like crazy with the technology that we had to try to integrate any change, anytime we wanted to make a reform to the healthcare system. Technology that existed at that time and that we had not invested in for a very long time created all sorts of barriers for us to be able to make the improvements we needed to the healthcare system. So when the Affordable Care Act came out and money came with to help us design a system rather than go with the federal --
Grant.
-- for the federal marketplace, we sought opportunity and people may not agree that this was the right thing to do, but we saw an opportunity to not only do the marketplace for the private insurance that you could choose to buy, but also to do these upgrades in our public programs. An extent that we were trying to find money in our budget to do, it just struggled to do that over time. So there's been enormous improvements, possibilities occurring because of the money the federal government has contributed to us to solve our technology problems, which have existed for a long time. So with that, I will turn this over to Commerce and I encourage you really, these wonderful people have come to be with us today. They really want to answer your questions, so please don't hold back, don't be shy, and let's show them what it's like to come and visit a community like Mankato or North Mankato. You can each get one.
Good morning, folks. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Peter Brickwady and the Director of Government Affairs for the Department of Commerce. This is, as Senator Sharon introduced, Deputy Commissioner Tim Van Dehe. Commissioner Van Dehe runs the Insurance Division at the Department of Commerce. That is the business unit assigned to do regulatory review of all insurance product filings in the state of Minnesota, including health insurance products. So we'll kind of go through the list of questions that Senator Sharon wanted us to ask or to answer right off the bat. Hopefully we'll cover a lot of your questions, but don't hesitate to start shouting at us and we'll just have a conversation as we go along. So as Senator Sharon mentioned, the Commerce Department is the insurance regulator for the state of Minnesota. That means that all insurers, whether it's health insurance, auto insurance, home insurance, surplus lines insurance, have to be licensed by the Department of Commerce and have to file their products with the agency for review prior to them being eligible to be sold in the state. With specific regard to health products, the Commerce Department views those products, both ones that will be sold through MinSure and ones that will be sold outside of MinSure directly by the companies. We review both the rates themselves and the mathematics and actuarial assumptions that go into those products as well as the forms, so the contract forms and the information that ends up going to the consumer when an individual or family sign up for a plan. The reviewer, what we are reviewing for, is a set of standards that's laid out in both state and federal law. In Minnesota, there are four standards that a health product has to meet, otherwise the Department of Commerce can reject the rate as not being appropriate for Minnesota. Those standards are that the rates cannot be unreasonable, they cannot be unjust, unfair, misleading, or deceptive, and there are about six more synonyms laid out in the statute. They cannot be excessive or not adequate, and they have to be actuarially justified. If the rates, as I said, don't meet those standards, the Department of Commerce has the power to reject those rates as they're filed by the company. And that's a very important consumer protection and not everyone in the country enjoys that. Minnesota's one of 31 states that's been deemed by the federal government to have what's called an effective rate review process. And one of the cornerstones of having an effective rate review process as it is defined by the federal government is the ability to reject rates. The state of California, just this past Tuesday, rejected a ballot measure to give the Insurance Commissioner of California that power. And it was, it was a loss, initially a fairly sizable one. The insurance department there was faced with a $57 million campaign by the insurance industry opposing that ballot measure and so unfortunately did not pass. And so in California, rates will be filed and then just immediately put into use and consumers have to pay those prices. The department doesn't have the ability to reject them as unreasonable for consumers. Could we come to the, to rates for rating areas three at the kind of the end of the presentation, but we can do a little bit more of the background? Generally, rates are calculated by the companies and then filed with the department based on each individual company's own experience. Now in Minnesota, or around the country, with health reform being in place, the health insurers can calculate rates based on a couple of factors. One is your age or the age of any family members in your plan. Two is the geography where you live and the different rating areas within each state. And three, the tobacco use of you or anyone else on your plan that's over the age of 18 and the benefits that are included in the health plan. In Minnesota, we have one of the most robust sets of benefits in the entire country. There's something that's called the Essential Health Benefits Set, or EHB, forgive me if I start using the acronym. That is a set of standard benefits that have to be included in every single plan sold in the country. There's 10 of them. When the ACA was implemented, the federal government said you have to do these 10 and then whatever's on the books in your state, you also have to include in, nothing can go away. And so in Minnesota, the total number of essential health benefits is, I think, close to 60, it's just under 60, maybe 56, don't quote me on that one. But it's one of the largest sets in the entire country. And so health insurers calculate their rates based on the experience of the company in terms of claims and the costs in total for their insured pool and then file rates on a yearly basis with the Commerce Department for review and approval. They're factoring the medical costs for all of the companies, for all of the lives in that market based on the geography of where they're serving. And that's something that's called community rating, which is basing the rates for the entire pool. And we can talk a little bit more about that as well.
May I interrupt there?
Yes, Senator.
We're talking about how the rates are set for our geographic area, which is number three. And so the experience in that region in terms of how people are using health insurance and what are they going to the doctor for or the healthcare system for, how much are they being charged, what the costs are, that is what we're talking about right now. They review that experience every year for rate setting. But you were saying that the experience in the region is used for rate setting and that caused me to ask this question. Is it the experience that that particular risk pool has on a particular product that they bought that allows them to change the rate for that product? Or is it the experience of the whole region, no matter which health insurance product they purchased, that allows them to change the rate for an individual policy?
Thank you very much for, sorry. Thank you very much for having me here, I appreciate it. Certainly there are quite a few things going on with health reform. I think to start, I'd just like to kind of explain some of my background and how I came to the state of Minnesota. I came here in April 2012 to work for the Department of Commerce. Prior to that, I had worked for the Wisconsin Insurance Department for 14 years. I was in charge of mergers, acquisitions, licensing, liquidations, and rehabilitations. I served on eight national working groups as well, chairing two of them. The Financial Analysis Handbook Working Group as well as the Financial Analysis Research and the Holman Working Group. What we're seeing right now is, you know, you can kind of step back a little bit further and maybe I can try to put this in terms that are more accessible to people. When you think about lost trend, and you'll hear that thrown around quite a bit, there are two actuarial assumptions underlying lost trend. One of them, one of them is medical inflation or cost of services and that's simply comparing, insurance companies compare what it costs in one year to access the services needed for their policy holders as compared to the cost in the second year. Medical inflation has been very low and has been held at a very minimal impact over the last three years. We've seen that trend in the industry. The other aspect of lost trend is utilization. And so that is how often individuals utilize the services that are being provided by the public. There is, right now, we're still obtaining additional data as we've just had the Affordable Care Act implemented and so we need to see some of the actual results. Some of the discussions of that utilization are on two basic concepts. One concept is the idea of pent-up demand, that there may have been individuals in our state that due to inability to access affordable healthcare, may not have been seeking that healthcare. And so there was thoughts that there may be a little bit of excess demand resulting from those individuals who had been putting off medical procedure. In addition to pent-up demand, there's discussion as to whether this is pent-up demand, which would subside over a period of time, or whether this is the new norm. I think the important thing when you look at utilization is to understand that these are Minnesota residents actually getting access to needed healthcare. And so that's a very, very good thing. And regardless of whether it ends up being that this is pent-up demand or the new normal utilization, the companies as well as the providers will continue to try to meet and achieve reasonable services between them at a reasonable price for the consumer. Senator Sharon's question about whether it's on an individual product basis or on the pool as itself is a very good question. Essentially, what we're looking at is the pool as a whole. And so individual products don't have the, and the companies have to set their rates on assumptions that are spread across the various metal levels. And so on an individual product here and there, it cannot be adjusted simply because we may have higher utilization occurring on those products. And so over time, what we will see is as this settles and the data starts to come in about the claim utilization is, is this pent-up demand where it will subside and then the rates would have less pressure being placed on them? Or is this the new norm in which case providers and insurance companies were to find additional ways of cost savings? And so I think that, you know, hopefully that answers your question about whether it's on an individual product. It's very important for us at the Department of Commerce to ensure that the rates do not reflect health status in any way. And so to allow for individual products to have adjustments like that reflective of the results of those products would be introducing health status into the actual assumptions.
Is there any other question at this point?
I've got a question about how you define a reasonable rate. Reasonable for whom? For example, I know someone whose rates are going to go up, this person was on Preferred One from $400 a month to $900. That to some folks would not be a reasonable rate and maybe there's some justification. So I'm wondering how you go about defining a reasonable rate?
I appreciate that question as well. I'm sorry, I appreciate that. That is a very good question about the reasonableness of rates. When we look at the actuarial assumptions, as I indicated, you have two of them driving the lost trend, utilization and medical inflation. With the advent and the introduction of the Affordable Care Act, there were federal mechanisms put in place to try to alleviate the pressure of what would occur if a company's products attract a higher utilization group of individuals. And so when we're looking at reasonableness of the rates, we're looking at consistency of the actuarial assumptions. For instance, when you think of a company making their estimation for utilization, how often their policyholders will actually use the services provided? There's also a mitigating force in the Affordable Care Act called the Risk Adjustment, which is meant to help provide benefit to the insurers and reimburse them for attracting higher-cost individuals. So when we look at the reasonableness of the actuarial assumptions, we'll look for, not only is it being based on the underlying data that's available for the pool, but we'll also look at consistency within the filing to ensure that if you are a company that is expecting to have high utilization, we would like to see how are you anticipating risk adjustment at the same time? So if you, for instance, if a company thought that their rates, that they were going to have policyholders that were going to utilize and be a sicker population, on the risk adjustment side, would it be unusual for that same company to think that their individual, they would also be a net payer on the risk adjustments? Thus suggesting that their population, well, it's going to be sicker, isn't going to be as sick as the other insurance companies in the market? And so it's very complicated, but what we actually have is, we've got some very knowledgeable staff here in the state of Minnesota. We had Julia Phillips, who was a longtime health actuary, working on these issues decades with the Department of Commerce. She was, in 2012, won the Award of Regulatory Actuary of the Year from the American Academy of Actuaries. She has now retired, however, we have replaced her with Kristi Bone. Kristi Bone comes to us from the Society of Actuaries where she actually authored, co-authored many of the reports on the Affordable Care Act and their intended consequences across the country in various states. So I think that, you know, it remains elusive and complicated to understand all the various actuarial assumptions and how they work. But looking for consistency and making sure that they're pulling from accurate data is how you determine whether the rates are reasonable and fair.
And if I could just tag on at the end, because you mentioned Preferred One. Preferred One sold plans through MinSure last year, so it's possible that your friend purchased it through MinSure or outside of MinSure directly from the company and Preferred One has decided, made a business decision not to return to sell products through MinSure this year. That question about what their ultimate out-of-pocket cost may be, used to be for most consumers, you didn't have a lot of options. You just, you maybe had one or two options traditionally through your employer if you were able to access that market, or if you were on the individual market, you didn't have a lot of options. What health reform in Minnesota has allowed for is an opportunity for consumers to not remain static in their healthcare decisions. So your friend who purchased a product from Preferred One and perhaps is facing steeper out-of-pocket costs this year, doesn't have to stay with that Preferred One product. So may find a product that is at a price point that they may find to be more reasonable for their pocketbook through MinSure or directly through one of the other carriers selling in this area. And I would add, and I'm sure Scott will touch on this at length in his presentation, that MinSure is the only place where, if your friend is eligible for tax credit assistance, to access that and that would further reduce their ultimate out-of-pocket expenses. And so one of the things that health reform has created is for the consumer to be able to shop and to do it in a transparent way so that you can take your health insurance and be portable with it and move and make decisions year to year based on your needs both financially and what will allow you to make the best healthcare decisions for you and your family.
May I just add to this discussion? The two things that are driving the rates are, at least, you know, your question was, what do you look at so that you say that these rates are reasonable? Reasonable to whom are we talking about was the essence of your question? And the answer really is saying, they're not talking about our income. They're not talking about whether, what we would think as purchasers of health insurance, if it's reasonable. It's not my decision about that. The reasonableness standard that is used at Commerce is whether or not what the company is asking for to be able to charge for rates is reasonable in relationship to prior history of the demands on them to pay out claims and the inflating costs of those claims. So is what they're asking to be paid related to what their, the real costs that they're having to pay, the bills, the bills that they're having to pay? So that question that you ask is really important so that you understand that when we're talking about reviewing and approving rates, it's against those standards, not against the general capacity or income of a person. Those issues are dealt with better on the exchange where a person may, because of their income, be able to access these tax credits. Then the other thing I want to emphasize that is said about Preferred One, there's lots of reasons why a company may decide to sell on the exchange or off of the exchange. But because we're talking about what is the history of the utilization and what the size of the charges were, how big were the bills for the pool that Preferred One got because they purchased, people purchased that product, they really picked up a lot of our high-risk pool. The people that were on a program called the Minnesota Comprehensive Health Program, which was for people who had been kicked off of health insurance because of a pre-existing condition or they changed jobs and nobody wanted to pick them up because they were high-risk or expensive health insurance users. So in the past, we put them on a program that Minnesota had all by itself that the other insured people on insurance products paid for through an assessment. That went away with the Affordable Care Act, but that group is a high-utilization group, purchased Preferred One at high numbers. So they struggled with these high-users, high-expense people against a rate So, they struggled with these high-users, high-expense people against a rate that they set, not understanding that that was going to happen to them. So, in order to be able to survive and to make the adjustment, they needed to move out of that to allow a period of time to pass where this high-risk pool gets distributed more fairly among the various providers. So, they have now a history of high utilization and high rates that they are trying to deal with, trying to predict what are the bills they're going to have to pay. And that's what Commerce is looking at to try to figure out. Is the rate that they're setting reasonable against the bills that they've been asked to pay out and not excessively profitable? Is that a fair response?
I think so, Senator. I think the reasonableness standard is a difficult one to grasp, because it means different things for different people. I think, Senator, what you're getting at is, I think, the third standard, which is that the rates cannot be excessive, so they can't be excessive to the consumer, but they also have to be adequate for the company, because it would not certainly be to the consumers' benefit if the insurance company to whom you're submitting a claim doesn't have the money to be able to pay those claims, and the company becomes unstable or potentially insolvent. And so, that's the balancing act, where you're trying to, and that the companies file, and then we are verifying that they've done the math correctly, that you're projecting not only based on what your costs have been, but looking through the crystal ball of the actuarial table into the future and understanding what your costs are going to be for the next year, in order to make sure that you can take in a reasonable amount of money from the consumer, but also have enough money to be able to pay bills for those consumers based on what their expected utilization will be.
So, thank you. Yeah, let me just follow up. I'm sorry to interject myself here, but I hear from my constituencies these kinds of questions, and answering them in a way that the constituent can understand them is really important to me. So, during the last year, there's a lot of discussion about, I thought you were going to have a situation where people wouldn't have to pay so much for their health insurance, Affordable Care Act. So, this question that you've asked is critically important. What drives the rates is how the people in our region are using it, how often are they going? The question that's going to be asked over the next couple of years is, is it an unusual utilization because of pent-up use? People didn't go and use insurance, they didn't have it? We don't know the answer to that question yet. But clearly, how our neighbors in our region use healthcare, how often, how sick they are, how needy they are, is influencing the rate. That's what's a huge driver of the cost of healthcare insurance. And then, the other is, how big are the charges? When we go in and get that care, how much are those providers charging us for that health service? Those two things are looked at every year, so that the insurance company can adjust their rates, can collect enough income to pay for the administration of that policy and for the costs that are charged against it. So, critical question, and then Preferred One specifically, I truly believe is dealing with having attracted a lot of these very, very high-risk purchasers of health insurance that were coming off of state program that provided for those who had been kicked off health insurance, for expensive people. Okay, another question?
I'd like, I'm just curious about the Herb's specific question relating to someone's policy going from $400 to $900. I know a healthy 50-year-old single guy who is constantly telling everyone that he went from $200 and some bucks a month on his old plan to Affordable Care Act to $400. It's very similar to Herb's. And is it possible that a $400 plan could go to $900, as Herb mentioned, for the same coverage? Is that possible in the system?
Well, that's a very good question, and there's no hard and fast answer to it, because every individual who purchases health insurance is going to have a different set of circumstances. And so, your ultimate end-of-the-day cost, out-of-pocket, are going to depend on your specific circumstances, whether or not you're purchasing insurance just for yourself, whether or not it's for you and your spouse or children.
Well, I assume Herb and I are both talking about people, I assume we're talking about people who had comparable coverage before and get comparable coverage through the, which I'm planning to do this year, through the Affordable Care Act. So, it's just for comparable coverage, is it possible to go from $400 to $900 or from $231 to $465?
Again, when we file the rate increase of 100% this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, that would be impossible. So, what's being described up here, maybe he was paying $400 after a tax credit, and then he's got his renewal in the mail and it's saying $900, the tax credit's not there to lower it. So, because he's no longer in Minture with Preferred One, so a lot of variables may be going into that.
As someone who supported and defended the Affordable Care Act from day one, I'd like to answer something like that.
Yeah. I think that the answer is...
Stop, stop. We're trying to get this for CCTV, so when you speak, have a microphone, so that that camera can pick up what you're saying. These are important discussions, I want you to repeat what you say.
I can move pretty quickly, just give me a chance.
If someone has defended and supported this and has done this from day one, what do I say to someone who brings up the point that Herb just brought up?
Yeah.
I've asked people, are you sure it's the exact same coverage, the same, the same deductibles? Did you have limited maxes before and you don't now? No, I got the same coverage, and I'm screwed, I'm paying twice as much. That's what they're saying.
Well, I think that's a really good question, and the answer is, they don't have to stay there. Every year, and this is one of the big, I think, culture shifts that we have to wrap our minds around as a state, is that you don't have to stay with that coverage. You can go to Minture and shop, and the value of Minture is manifold, but particularly because it provides transparency to the consumer, so that you know what the costs and the coverages are going to be compared to what you had previously. You can compare them apples to apples. And you can also, if you are eligible, it's the only place where you can access tax credit assistance, which will further reduce your ultimate out-of-pocket rates. I think the answer to your friend is, if you don't want to pay $900, you don't have to. You can go shop and find comparable coverage at a price point that works for you, and that is the answer.
Hi, it's your phone.
Okay, let's...
There's one other gentleman. You had a question, sir?
Yes.
My question is, you're talking about, and she was talking about, you know, that pastime we couldn't get, we don't know how much, you know, people are going to be using it, why is it whatever. Well, I'm sorry, but you do have that information. And the gentleman down here, he keeps opening up his laptop or top lab, so the information is there. You just got to go to the hospital and say, hey, you know, how many people have been coming in for a cough or for a scratch or whatever, you have it there. You know, it seems like every other year, the hospital is jacking up their prices, so that's why the insurance is jacking up the prices. And we're all talking about, you guys are talking about, well, it all depends, you know, how many people you use it, how many. No, it doesn't depend on that. You guys have that information already. Everybody has that information. You know, the thing of it is, is we've got to figure out a way of, I'm sorry to say, but have the hospital stop jacking their prices up. I mean, it's silly that you go for aspirin, that you can go to Walmart and buy for six bucks a bottle, and then charge $7 for a pill, you know? And I'm one of the persons that just lost my job, so I don't have insurance, or I won't be having insurance. And now, I got to, like you said, I got a choice to pick this or pick that. How am I going to ever have the choice to pick this and pick that if I don't have a job?
Well, let me make sure everybody gets a chance to speak to this. Your afterthought, I want to say, you're absolutely correct. What I'm hoping, we separate out the questions here, that what the Commerce Department is doing is taking data that we do have and using it to be able to, with the insurance companies, justify the rates based on utilization and the prices that the hospital is charging or the doctors are charging. That's what you're talking about. The reforms related to getting our arms around that, how do we change the cost of healthcare that the hospital or the providers charge you, is a different question that Commerce doesn't deal with. The legislature is trying to deal with that. It's the next step now, after we get this thing operational and moving forward. The next question is, how do we change that trajectory of the costs that people are asking for, for healthcare? And that is another question, you're absolutely right, that it really isn't one that this group of people are, we're going to be able to answer today. We have started to change it by instead of paying for each pill or each procedure, you know, so each one is billed a certain amount of money, changing that into a new model of payment, which says, what, you're going to get a certain amount of money to serve this person, and you have to serve them in a way that moves them towards a higher level of wellness. And it won't make any difference if you do a procedure 700 times or 70 times. The outcome is what we're going to look at, not how often you're billing us. So, that's one of the things we're working on, but it is not what we're really talking about today. It is the next important step of healthcare reform. We aren't done yet. We're just setting sort of the groundwork for establishing the fact that everybody has health insurance, that everybody gets it covered, and that some people aren't avoiding paying for some health insurance if they can, forcing other people to pay for it through their policies. So, that's what the Affordable Care Act primarily did for us. But you're absolutely right, and we need to get at that. So, let's let Commerce continue in their presentation. Is there anything more you wanted to say, or should we leave it open for questions for a while?
I'd like to ask one quick. I'm curious about the pent-up demand. Was that considered in the rate structures from last year? Was that involved in the deliberations that Commerce was involved with, both from, and as well as insurance companies? Did they demonstrate some expectation of the pent-up demand? It was one of the factors that was considered. You know, Minnesota is very unique. We have the second-holdest, as well as the largest high-risk pool. And as Senator Sharon mentioned before, their utilization is actually three times, on average, what the average citizen or state utilizes. Unlike many of the states that closed their high-risk pools and simply allowed them to try to find products in the standard market, Minnesota transitioned that over time. And so, last year, the companies were anticipating about 30% to 40% transition of this high-risk pool. Today, we've had over 70% transition of the high-risk pool. And they still have to price in for 2015. What they were pricing in was the remaining 60% to 70% of the high-risk pool. So, you know, the idea of pent-up demand was certainly there, but there's also measures in the Affordable Care Act, like free preventative care, that is intended to, you know, if we know that when we identify illness earlier, it's more cost-effective to treat that illness early than to wait, that will help to provide benefit on the lost trend over time by reducing the cost in the entire pool.
Okay, we have about 10 more minutes with Commerce. And Commerce is focused on reviewing the policies and approving the policies that you get to purchase, whether it's on the exchange or not on the exchange. And their job is consumer protection, to make sure that you're not paying more than is justified for that product. And so, I wanted you to have that conversation, because it was big in the last several years, several months, as it relates to what's happening with healthcare. This was true, by the way, these trends that we're talking about in the cost of health insurance is not new in the last year or since the Affordable Care Act was implemented. This process that Commerce has done has been in place for a long time, since, what did you say, at least 20 years, right? At least 20 years, and have provided this role for us to make sure that the cost of insurance products is justifiable based on utilization patterns and on the bills, on the charges that the doctors and hospitals are, are putting on their bills for your healthcare. Mary, I know you had your hand up before, so I don't want to miss you. I guess Clark's going to bring that over, and then we'll follow up with your question.
I've been selling insurance for about 40 years, and, you know, to say that this has been a bumpy road is an understatement for the people that sell insurance here. We're here to try to help our consumers. To speak to your rate increase, you know, when I was selling, I'm Nicola County, Blue Earth County, Preferred One, I have three options in Nicola County, Preferred One, Medica, and Blue Cross. In Blue Earth County, I have Blue Cross and Medica. I sold a lot of Preferred One because of their price structure. So, that's why they have that big pool of people and have that sick people, and I understand why their rates are going up, but you do have, you do have the ability to shop around. And more often than not, you know, when the clients came into our office and said, what's this about the Affordable Care Act? It has been painful for everyone. So, I just wanted to bring that out. I see why Preferred One did what they did, but it's another little insult to the consumer to say, well, what's that all about?
You know, you're reminding me, Mary, and I forgot to ask, and I'd like our presenters to talk about this geographic region that we are in. Under the Affordable Care Act, the insurers are allowed to have a geographic area in which to evaluate utilization and pricing, and then set the rates for the insurance products that we buy in Blue Earth County and Nicola County based on our region of the state. And there are differences in the cost of health insurance products in rural Minnesota as opposed to the metropolitan area, significantly different. So, in the rural area, there are higher, our cost of healthcare through, if you buy a product, is higher. And I wanted you to talk about that, because these products are reviewed based on geographic data. And so, why is Region 3 have, even though this time we have more products than we've ever had before to choose from, not, does not have the same number of products as the metropolitan area, you know, for that competition and for us to have a comparison? And why is the cost differential occurring in our area as opposed to the metropolitan area? Would you like to hear about that? I would.
One word: Mayo.
Thanks, Senator Mary. Mary, I think you highlighted a lot of what was going to be the end of our presentation. You took words right out of our mouth. So, we're in what's called Rating Area 3. There are going to, again, be three carriers selling in Nicola County. Preferred One was selling there last year. A new carrier to the exchange, Blue Plus, will be selling in Nicola County. You're right, in Blue Earth County, will be Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Medica, who sold through Minture last year and are returning. A couple of things, there are products at different metal levels. We have talked about it at the outset, but generally, I think folks are aware that different plans are given different metal levels, bronze, silver, gold, and platinum, depending on how rich the benefit set is and what the consumer's cost share is going to be for those plans. Some of the carriers are going to be offering plans in 2015 that are as much as 2.7% less than what they were in 2014. So, I think, Senator, to your point, we're starting to see some bending of the curve. We're not anywhere near where we need to be ultimately, but we're seeing things go in the right direction in this part of the state. And there are also, compared to last year, 23 more products that are going to be sold throughout the region at different metal levels that were not available last year. And so, I think what you're also starting to see is carriers taking a look at the first year's worth of data and realizing that they can compete, and they can get more business in this part of the state by offering better products. And that's one of the goals of Health Reform, to try to drive more access and better costs for consumers throughout Minnesota. And you're right, Senator, there are cost differences and there are access differences between rural Minnesota and the Twin Cities. For example, there are significant differences in cost and access between one part of rural Minnesota and another part of rural Minnesota. There is one large healthcare provider in southeastern Minnesota. That's not something that the Commerce Department is involved in. I would defer to our colleagues at the Health Department, who are not here today, who do the regulatory review for what's called a network adequacy, which is to review the state standards, federal standards for access to the network of doctors or providers within each carrier's product plan. That is a large component of the cost of the plan, but that's something that the adequacy of the network, to make sure that the right set of doctors are in, are available to a consumer when they purchase a plan, is something the Health Department reviews and the Commerce Department does not. That is a big driver, and it is a big driver throughout the state, and access is a big part of it.
Well, I would just add a couple comments about that. One, your job is very important, being an agent. You certainly understand... You certainly understand that the insurance product itself, the policy is simply a contract to put policyholders into the network that they want to go. And what we've seen is, like any market, as long as consumers are willing to shop and look for the best option available to them, insurance companies will continue to provide additional products to try to compete for your business. And I think that is what we're seeing.
Great. And I just want to emphasize this because it is a question that I receive often about why is health insurance more expensive for our businesses and our individuals in our part of the state? And I just want to restate what I think I heard you say about that. And that is that because there are fewer providers, there's less... And then this provider network, what does that word mean? That means when you buy an insurance policy, they say who you can go see in that health insurance policy. Who is it in that health insurance policy that's going to be your GP? And you have a set of people that you can choose from. But it is restricted. It's not just you can go to anybody. And that's part of the way that they are controlling costs, by negotiating rates with their providers for what they're going to charge patients that influence the cost of that health insurance policy. So if you agree to the rates that they set for those doctors, you can be a provider in that network. And it has to be adequate, meaning that those of us in rural Minnesota should be able to access this care within so many miles of driving time. So if you have to leave work or you have to pick up a child and do something, that it's not an extraordinary burden in terms of how much time, how much of your effort you have to make in order to access that health care. So that's what we talk about when we talk about provider network adequacy. And the insurance product defines who your providers can be if you purchase that product and the adequacy issue comes into play there. But because we don't have a lot of providers, a lot of systems out here, there's less pressure on those systems to change their rate structure, at least through this process at the Commerce Department. And that's what I meant by legislature is going to try to be looking at ways throughout the state to have the pressure be on all systems, even when there isn't a lot of competition in provider systems, to provide health care in models that reward outcome, making people healthier than by the volume and the frequency with which you go to see somebody. So this is a next phase issue. We haven't gotten our arms around it. We're working on it. It's getting better, but it still is the next rollout of initiatives that we're engaged in.
There's two more people that wanted to ask a question.
Mine was, I was just wondering if you knew that the insurance companies now have, is it an 80% for overhead? And then if it was more than that, they had to send out checks to the people? Were there a lot of those this year?
It's the reverse.
Or was it more than 80?
The insurance companies have a medical loss ratio that has been around in Minnesota for some time, but at the federal level, they have to spend on an individual basis, 80% of the premium that comes in has to actually be paid out as claim dollars. In group settings, they have to provide 85% in claim dollars associated with that. So they're limited to 20% essentially in the individual market for administrative costs associated with it.
And I would add, that law's been in place in Minnesota for many, many years. And in fact, it was added to the Affordable Care Act on a national level and applied to all insurers across the country based on the model in place here in Minnesota because it has worked very well for consumers.
We're down to about one minute for Commerce, so this will be our last question.
See, what is the acceptable profit margin for the insurance companies?
Well, that's where the medical loss ratio comes in. So they have to pay out of the 20% that they're afforded for administrative expenses, they have to pay out the administration expenses of the company as well as commissions to the agents that would sell it. And so you start to find that the margins of profitable and what would be a reasonable profit margin are quite small, probably less than, in every case, I would assume, less than 5% of the would be expected, any type of return on that investment.
Okay. We have some concluding remarks and then we will move on to...
You know, in conclusion, I'm very thankful that you invited us here to come and talk. And I think that things that people have to really remember is to shop. That's how consumers are going to impact the marketplace, be most impactful to the marketplace by being willing to go around and allow insurance companies to continue to innovate and provide products that meet your needs at a price point that is acceptable. If you're benefiting from, eligible for federal subsidies, MinSure is going to make that affordability even that much easier to do. But consumers, if, as we see health reform go forward, it's been very dynamic to change the insurance industry from competing solely on who can attract the healthiest individuals to their company and now who can deliver the most efficient and cost-effective services to those people. And in order to do that, we need consumers to be engaged in their purchase of health insurance, to review that very carefully with licensed agents and brokers as well as MinSure, and to be willing to move around to find the best product for their individual situation or their family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much and thank you for those smart questions. I told you, we would maybe try to stump you. Okay, now we're going to move on. I'm going to have both DGS and MinSure come up at the same time and answer your questions about aspects of the health insurance program that are related to those products being sold on the Minnesota Insurance Exchange. So these are not the products that are outside the exchange. Those are available for you to shop and compare, can you do better inside or outside of the exchange. But because so much attention is on the exchange, what its capacities are, what its continuing difficulties are, how you can access it, and if you have difficulty looking through the system, what your options are. So with that, we're going to have some introductory remarks and then please try to stump our guest speakers again. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Scott Leitz. I'm the CEO at MinSure. And I want to first start by thanking Senator Sharon Johnson for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you so much for hosting this morning. I just want you all to know what a great job they do in St. Paul on representing their interests and I think holding us as administrative agencies accountable to the work that we are charged with doing. And I also want to thank everyone just for being here this morning and your willingness to come out on Saturday morning and hopefully stump us with your questions. And hopefully we'll be able to provide good information to you. And if we're not able to answer it today, rest assured, we're very happy to take it back to the office and get you an answer on any questions that you do have that I wouldn't be able to answer. I want to start just by saying a little bit about what MinSure actually is. MinSure was established by the state legislature and it was, under the Affordable Care Act, states were given the option to either set up their own state-based health insurance exchanges. And if they didn't do that, they defaulted into the federal exchange, healthcare.gov. And there were a number of states that made the decision, like Minnesota did, to, for a variety of reasons, to set up their own health insurance exchanges. And in Minnesota, the one that was established is called MinSure. We aren't an insurance product. MinSure isn't an insurance product. We're what's called an insurance marketplace. It's where people can go to shop for coverage that is offered and approved. When my colleagues at the Commerce Department go through, they approve insurers and their rates. And then those rates are offered on MinSure and also outside of MinSure. MinSure is voluntary. It's not required that insurance companies operate through there. I think you saw this year with Preferred One, for example, they offered the first year, chose not to offer the second year. Blue Plus chose not to offer the first year, but chose to offer this year. So we're seeing a marketplace sort of evolve of products that are available. We, MinSure is governed by a board of directors. We're a little bit unique in some sense in the way that the legislature structured us. Most state agencies have a commissioner and governor appoints a commissioner. In this case, as the CEO of the organization, I actually report to a seven-member board. And that board actually governs MinSure and has responsibility for the operations of the organization. So far, since we opened for business last October, we've enrolled about 375,000 people into health insurance coverage. A lot of those are through the programs that Nathan Morocco administers at the Department of Human Services, the Medicaid Program, and the Minnesota Care Program. But we've enrolled close to 60,000 people in private insurance coverage, including about 2,000 here in the Mankato area. Upcoming, we're starting our next open enrollment period. So the way it works under the way the federal law was structured is that each year, there's an open enrollment period for private insurance coverage. And people have to, are required to purchase coverage to meet the federal requirements that everybody have coverage. And there's an open enrollment period over which you buy that coverage. Last year, that ranged from October through the end of March. This year, it's a shorter period of time, starting next Saturday, actually, November 15th, and that will be through February 15th that people can purchase coverage. And then after those time periods, unless you're either eligible for a public health insurance program or you have what's called a life event meeting, that you have a baby or you get married, there's no way to actually purchase coverage outside those open enrollment periods except in special circumstances. So what's it mean for open enrollment to really occur? Well, it means that you can come in either through MinSure, we're going to encourage you to do that, but you don't have to go through MinSure. You can buy directly from a carrier if that's a preference that you have. I'll get to why we think it's important to go through MinSure in a second. But it means you can come in, shop, and compare the coverages that are available. You can shop anonymously, meaning that you don't have to set up an account in MinSure to compare the prices that are there and get a sense of what your premium is going to be in the area. You can find out whether you're eligible for Minnesota Care, whether you're eligible for the Medicaid Program, or whether you're eligible for a tax credit to help lower the cost of your health insurance coverage, or whether your income is such that you're not eligible for those things. But you'll still be able to shop and compare and see what is available in the marketplace. So I want to say a little bit about what to expect this year when you come through MinSure. I'll start by talking about last year. I'm going to use some technical terms today. The first technical term I'm going to use is messy. I think last year, the system was messy. Our broker friends who had to try to go through were enormously patient in working with the organization as they worked through startup kinks and there's no other way to describe them. When I joined the organization, the open enrollment started October 1st. I actually came onboard as CEO kind of in mid-December, a little bit after the launch, and was asked to come on. And to give you a sense of where things were at when I joined back in December, so it's after a couple months of operation, we had about 20,000 people, is another technical term, who were stuck in the system, meaning that they filled out an application, but they couldn't find their application in the system. We had to kind of work through each of those people individually. Brokers who were trying to help their clients would call in, they'd wait, I don't know, you could probably tell stories, but I bet hour, two hours.
I think 80 hours maybe was mine for the open enrollment.
Yeah, yeah, enormous amounts of time. We opened with...
Three-hour one then.
Yeah, and I, on a good day, when I joined in December, on a good day, if it was below an hour wait time, I'd call start and say, "We had a good day." And obviously for us, that was not a good day. Not for anybody calling in, it was a good day. I can tell you, this week, our wait times were less than a minute. And we opened last year with 22 call center representatives. That proved to be somewhat insufficient. We'll have 300 call center representatives this year. We'll have a dedicated broker line so that you can call in directly and have people who know your business better. Still some kinks to work out, obviously, but I think we're learning from some of the stuff that happened with a new startup last year. And thanks to everybody because I think it was a collective patient learning experience for everybody. We've tried to learn from that and to make the system better this year. So what can you expect this year as you come back through? Well, first of all, the system itself is better. It's not perfect by any means, but it is better than it was. And what do I mean by better? Well, we've done things like improved just the pure way the website looks. If you come to the website, it's a lot easier to navigate than it was last year. Secondly, we've added a lot of speed to the website. So the pages load about twice as fast this year than they loaded last year. Real simple stuff, but it was frustrating for folks to sit there and wait for the webpage to load. It loads about twice as fast now and actually I've been on it a few times and I'm actually surprised myself about how much quicker it does load. Third, it's a lot more stable of a system. One of the things that people struggled with last fall is they'd come on, they'd start in an application and it would freeze, it would crash, and then they have to start all over again. That doesn't happen nearly as often now. Doesn't say that, not to say that it doesn't happen sometimes, but it doesn't happen nearly as often now as it used to. There's good stability. As we had the big rush of people right at March 31st who were coming at the end of open enrollment last year, the site was stable through that entire period. And so we had its stability throughout the spring and we've continued to do that throughout the summer and now into the fall as we move towards open enrollment. So I think what you're going to find on the site itself is a more navigable site and an easier site to use and a more stable site to use. That's not to say that on occasion there won't be problems. We fully expect that there will be, but we're better staffed to do that this year. So if you have problems with the site or if you just have questions, we encourage you to call our call center. We are fully staffed this year, as I mentioned, with 300 folks compared to, you know, a tenth of that last year, less than a tenth of that last year. And really encourage people to do that. But then more importantly, or as importantly, this year, you have, and we're trying to make sure people understand just the community resources available. The brokers and agents who do such amazing work to get folks into coverage and are really dedicated to doing that are here to help navigator organizations, which are community-based people who actually work a lot with the programs that Assistant Commissioner Morocco administers Medicaid and Minnesota Care, churches, nonprofit organizations locally. If there's a list of navigators available outside, we can help. You get enrolled. So we have over 3,000 people on the ground between our agents and our brokers and our navigators who are there to help one-on-one. One of the things we learned last year is that while I think sometimes in shorthand, people used to refer to MinSure as being, well, be like, you know, trevelocity for insurance coverage. What we learned was that buying insurance coverage is a lot more complicated than renting the used car, for example. People needed help and they needed assistance and there's a lot of really, really great people in every community to do that. And so we have a really, a good searchable list now on our website where you can, without needing to set up an account or anything, go and type in your zip code and it will return to you who are the agents and brokers in your area, who are the navigators in your area who can help you get into that insurance coverage. We welcome feedback, by the way, on all this stuff. We're trying to sort of listen to what people are saying about where our challenges have been, continue to make improvements. But the only way we're going to be able to do is just continuously listening to you all as you have feedback for us to make the system better. Let me say a little bit about the market itself. It's already been talked about a fair amount this morning. I'll just mention it again, Preferred One, which offered last year had the lowest rates in the market last year, is not going to be offering on the exchange this year. Blue Plus, which didn't offer last year, is going to be offering products this year on the exchange. As my colleagues from the Commerce Department mentioned, there will be more choices statewide and overall in the market this year than there were last year. And I think what you're seeing is really the evolution of a market. Markets are all about companies coming in, coming out, figuring out what business is working for them, figuring out what products they need to offer. Honestly, it's going to take a few years to sort this out and I think we're in year two, but as the products come on and come off, I think the insurers are trying to figure out exactly how to price their products, what networks they want to make available. And I think we're starting to see how that works. So here's what we're really encouraging people to do as we move into open enrollment this year. First of all, because of the changes in the market and because of the availability of financial assistance, which is only available through MinSure. So if you're purchasing, if you want to purchase a health insurance policy and you want to have some either, and you want to figure out what your actual price is, you can come in and shop anonymously, figure out what the premium is in your area. But then come and set up an account and then we'll be able to tell you more specifically based on your information, what your income is, your family size, where you live and so forth, what products are available to you, and then what financial help might be available to you. MinSure is the only place you can get that financial help. If you buy outside the exchange, you can't. There's no ability to get financial help. And so the question that was earlier about Preferred One, you know, part of the reason those are, the products have gone up as much as they have and people are seeing a little bit of a sticker shock is because folks were able to get financial help last year by a policy with a tax credit, for example, which lowered the actual cost. What they're seeing now with the Preferred One products is the price without any financial help. And so there's a little bit of a differential that's caused there. So we are really encouraging people to come back through, see what's available to them if they want to stick with their Preferred One product or other products outside the exchange. Certainly they're right to do that, but we really think it's worth people's while to spend 20 minutes and to come through and see what's available, fill out an application because odds are you're going to be able to get some financial help in your purchasing of coverage. purchasing of coverage. As I mentioned, we are really thankful and grateful for the community-based work that the agents, brokers, navigators, and others are doing to really help people guide, guide them through the process. They do an enormous amount of work, and they've had to do an enormous amount of work this past year, doubly so, because the system wasn't as good to them as it should have been. But I think, but I think that's improving, and we're getting better. The site will be greatly improved. So with, I think centered with that, I'm just going to, you know, pause. Maybe you want Nathan to go, and then we can take questions, or do you want to take them now?
I think we can maybe continue. I just want to go back and put on-the-ground level language to something I heard here. I'm sorry if I'm repeating, but, you know, this question comes up over and over, why for a Preferred One would you go from 300 to 900, or 600 to 900, such a huge rate? And Scott was talking about that. This Preferred One has gone out of the exchange. So that might have been the price, that might have been the price without consideration of tax credits, or it might have been closer to that. But because they're outside the exchange now, you're seeing the number of what that product is without the write-downs that people can have with a tax credit inside the exchange. Because that tax credit process is not available unless you purchase something on the Minnesota Insurance Exchange. And that's why you're hearing from this group over and over, shop, look around, and see if there is something available for you that would help the cost of your product because of tax credits, but, or even, not the cost, even if you don't get tax credits, what's offered on the exchange might offer you a more competitive price. And Nathan?
Great, thank you. Well, one of the advantages that I have in going last is that people have covered all the technical aspects of MintSure. So I want to thank Representative Johnson and Senator Karen for allowing us to come down. So we've covered a lot of the technical pieces, so let me just give you three basic takeaways. One of the questions might be, why, why would somebody like me be here? I represent the public programs, I represent Medicaid and Minnesota Care. It's important to recognize that there are really two aspects to MintSure. One is that MintSure represents the programs, the qualified health plans, the tax credits that go along with it. MintSure also represents an IT system, and that IT system is a system that we duly share at DHS. So it's an important system for us. And so there's a distinction here. When we talk about what's going on with MintSure, we need to recognize, as CEO Lights had mentioned, that, you know, two-thirds to three-quarters of the folks that come in through MintSure, the IT system, end up on the, on the public health programs. So there are many clients that we are serving at DHS that are using the MintSure system. But it's also important to recognize that the programs of Medicaid and Minnesota Care have been around for years. We have served hundreds of thousands of clients for years and years, so we have been serving these folks for a long time. We then had some, some people, through the expansion that's occurred over the last couple of years, leveraged the systems, or the MintSure system, as a way to come into our programs. So one of the key messages that I'd like folks to understand is that we have people that we have been serving for a long time, and they sit on our legacy IT systems. And we also have people who have now come in through this new front door called MintSure that are also receiving coverage through, through these care systems. So the message for me is, to you would be, one, be mindful of, as you hear about activity related to MintSure, that is both the public programs and the commercial markets. Recognize that DHS has served clients in both our legacy systems and our new systems. So as people hear messaging about what to do and what action to take relative to MintSure, for public, for our clients, we will let them know if they need to do anything for, for any kind of enrollment activity. When we talk about open enrollment for MintSure, what we're really talking about is those folks who are in the commercial market. These are the people that are on the individual or small group market who came in through, through MintSure and need to renew that coverage. They will obviously need to take action, and that's really the activity that you're hitting a lot about right now. We have a similar type of open enrollment, but it does work a little bit different. We are fortunate enough that through the rules offered at the federal and state levels, that we can actually renew a lot of our folks automatically. They don't need to take any action. We just need to find a way to, to verify that their income is still appropriate or still accurate relative to what we have in our system. And we do that by picking various data sources that are out there at the federal or state level. And if we can then confirm that information, we can renew our clients without any activity whatsoever. And for those folks that were able to do that, we will let them know that we have taken action on their, on their enrollment. We're letting them know that this is what we base their renewal on, and assuming if they, if they think, and we'll give them the information that indicates what we base that on, and they don't need to take any other action. There are some folks that we can't confirm their information, and we will let them know that as well. And we will send them a notification that says, "We are unable to verify the information. Please, here's what we have on file for you. Please verify this and send it back to us." But in either case, we are going to connect directly with our clients. So when you hear about open enrollment on November 15th, that is for the qualified health plans, that's for the individual commercial markets, that's not for, for the DHS enrollees. So I just wanted to make sure that that clarification was out there. And of course, because we share this, this IT platform together, you know, sort of to the extent that it works well for the QHPs, then it's working well for us. We will, over time then, for the next 12 months, we will take those folks that are sitting on our legacy systems, our hundreds and hundreds of thousands of folks, we will, over time, move them in through the MintSure system. We will get their account set up there. And we want to do that eventually, really based on the example that came up earlier, somebody had said that they had lost their job, where are they going to get coverage? And really, the advantage of us sharing this unified IT platform is that regardless of what's going on with your individual circumstances, whether you want an individual policy, as we talked about with the qualified health plan, or if you're in a situation where you may lose your job, and now you're eligible for Medicaid or Minnesota Care. If we have you in one system, now you can move between those types of products seamlessly. All your information is one system. You don't have to come to one part of government and say, "I think I qualify for Medicaid, fill out a form for us, and we put you on Medicaid," and then you get a job, and now you want to go and get an individual policy, and then go into a different system, re-enter all that same information again. So the idea here is that at some point, we will get to that no-wrong door, where you will come into a single point of entry, and the system will, will determine whether or not you can be on public programs, or whether or not you will qualify for, for the tax credits under a QHP. And this is going to have huge advantages to those folks as individuals, it's going to have huge advantages to the brokers and to the navigators that are assisting folks. Because regardless of what program you may qualify, if you have a navigator that is assisting somebody, then they are going to be able to come to a single source and help people sort out that coverage. So my piece is really just a point of clarification, and be happy to take any questions.
One question off the top right away, and sort of following up for the question of for the Insurance Exchange. First of all, you have mentioned, I want to restate that there's many people already on public programs, disability, persons with disabilities, persons with very, very low income that are on public programs, either Medicaid or the Minnesota, Minnesota Care, which is becoming a new program. And people are eligible for that based on income. So those who are, who have been on those programs continue to be eligible for those programs. You're talking, those are the legacy people that you're talking about. But today, if I've lost my job, or my circumstances have changed, can I go on the Minnesota Insurance Exchange and put that information in, and find out that I'm eligible for Medicaid or for Minnesota Care? Is that how I, as a new person, struggling with achieving, not having a job, is that how I access to discover what resources are available for me so that I can get my health insurance needs met for me and my family?
Yeah, absolutely. So that is going to be our best source. So when I talk about the single-door approach, that functionality exists today, and that's really what we want people to do, is come in through the MintSure system, and then let it determine what you qualify for, so that if you qualify for the tax credits, you get the tax credits. If you qualify for Medicaid, then, then you'll be enrolling Medicaid. What I was referring to was the folks that, you know, that are sitting in our legacy system, we will eventually move them in. The reason that we have a significant number of folks who are already in the MintSure IT system is that because of the expansion under the Affordable Care Act, we had, you know, a couple hundred thousand people that weren't even on the public programs. And so as part of that Medicaid expansion, we brought them into our systems leveraging the new, the new IT, sort of, you know, MintSure environment. So that's why we've got some folks sitting, sitting in the new system, we've got some folks sitting in the old system. And admittedly, that's going to create some confusion over the next 12 months, you know, the, our clients are going to be hearing all kinds of messages and not, and not understanding whether or not they need to do something. So that's why I'm really here, trying to send that message, that for public program clients, our enrollees, we will contact them when we need them to take action. And so, and I think this gentleman made a, had a question.
Thank you. Currently, under the new rules, assets are not taken into consideration on enrollment in the public enrollment programs. I, as an agent also, and the chairman for the Southern Minnesota Insurance and Financial Advisors Organization here in Mankato, have enrolled many people, we've gone through this system, input their income. They may be millionaire on paper and assets and stuff, and they automatically get enrolled in medical assistance, even though they don't want to. Is there processes here where they can click a button saying, "I want to opt out, I don't want to be part of the medical assistance, I'm worth $10 million, I'm a businessman that's had a business loss last year, I'm a farmer that has set up a corporation and pay myself nominal dollars, I've got a number of people that I insured." And then, when they did get put on a medical assistance program, they contacted the county, they contacted the state, and the county and the state offices said that, "No, we can't remove them," even though they wanted to be removed. The county was saying, "No, you have to get them removed, you got to get MintSure to change their data, we can't remove you." There was a big disconnect with the counties being educated on what they couldn't, couldn't do. And it frustrated many people, and it frustrates a lot of people, you know, that we've got millionaires on medical assistance, you know, shopping up our dollars within the system. So I'm wondering if there's any process that we can do to avoid that, other than lying about your income on the application. And then the next year, when you mine the data, then they'll get put on the, on the medical assistance, not even knowing it, because you mined the data from your prior year tax return.
So thank you for that question. There's a lot of components to that, so let me, let me try to break that down if I can. I think really to get to the heart of the matter is related to the functionality of the MintSure IT system. And as CEO Lights had mentioned earlier, you know, a year ago, it did not function the way that we needed it. So for all the reasons that MintSure was struggling on the commercial side, we were having those same challenges on the, on the public side, you know, obviously for those who, who were, who were enrolling through that new system. So functionality, like being able to remove somebody who was deemed eligible, but it just did not exist a year ago. It does exist today. And so we do have that kind of functionality. There's another important piece that you referred to, and that is folks are going to the counties. So traditionally, the, the public programs are, are really administered at the county level. And as a result of the challenges that we were having with, with the IT system, we had to bring a lot of that functionality back into DHS, just as a way of managing the issues. We were closer to the programmers, we were closer to the system itself, there was a lot that was unknown in terms of functionality. So in order to get our hands around that, what we have spent the last six to nine months doing is nothing but really assessing what is, what is the level of functionality that exists, how can we improve that functionality? And if something doesn't work the way ideally we would like to, what, what are the workarounds? Because there are some very practical things that you have to do. Whether the system can do it or not, it's not acceptable to be able to say that you can't disenroll somebody because they don't qualify. So then trying to find out what are some other ways that we can do that. And so we brought all that functionality in, because there was no way through 87 counties and 2,500 county employees trying to administer benefits and, and manage their client accounts on a system where the functionality was greatly misunderstood, just wasn't very practical. So we brought that in, and that's what we, that's what we have spent to this point, really trying to figure out. Now we're at a, at a point where we are starting to roll that stuff back out to the counties. So as an example, if there is a new enrollee who is interested in determining their eligibility for a public program, starting this Monday, they can now go to the counties, and the counties can insist them on a new application. However, if they're an existing enrollee, and they have a change in circumstance, a life event, as, as CEO Lights had mentioned, we're still going to manage that for a period of one, two, three more months, as we can roll out more training to the counties so they understand how to manage the client's accounts on this new system. So that's part of, not only the, so not only is there, is there an IT transition that's going to occur, our legacy folks eventually need to get into the MintSure IT system, there is also a transition that's occurring from just a workforce perspective, where it really was county administered prior to MintSure. We brought that back into DHS so that we could better manage it, and now we're starting to redeploy that back out to the counties. So I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't say that all functionality is where that we want it by no means, but we are a lot more sophisticated about what we can, can do, and we, and we think we have workarounds for just about any circumstance. So if there is a navigator, broker, or, you know, anybody who, who needs help on an individual level, they, they should just call our, our service center, and we can make sure that, that their specific circumstances taken care of. I hope I answered all the questions.
Not, not really. On the, on the issue of, I'm, I'm signing up, and I've got a lower income, but I'm worth $1 million, can I opt out and not get put on medical assistance?
So the rules of qualification are predefined. I'm not sure that I can answer your specific question about what assets may or may not count, because there, well, there are some programs where there isn't, where there is an asset spend down, so it depends on what programs you're referring to, and maybe we can touch base.
But I think, I think the question is even, regardless of whether there's a spend down of assets or not, the question is, he's working with somebody that doesn't want to go on a public program, is there built into the system now the capacity for him to check a box or something that takes them out of the public program so that they can access the private marketplace? That's the simple question that they're asking. It's a yes or no question.
Sure. So on the public health, on the public health side, yes, we can ensure that you are not enrolled. What that qualifies you for outside of our programs, that would be a question for.
Let me follow up on that. If, is there a complicating factor here, that if you opt out of the public program because you really have other capacities than the ones that are measured in MintSure for eligibility, will you now get stuck in the system that says you can access tax credits that you may also not want to access?
Yeah, I think that is the complicating factor here. And I think that there, the question is a good one, and we get that sometimes, which is, "I don't actually want to be on Minnesota Care, I don't want to be on Medicaid, I just want to get the coverage." There are ways that we can now opt them out of that. You're right, that for a period of time, they were sort of like, it was hard to get them out of the programs, but as Assistant Commissioner Morocco mentioned, there's been a lot of progress made in our ability to do that. The complicating factor is that they're likely not going to be eligible for assistance outside of that, meaning that's unlikely that they'll have a tax credit. So if they want to purchase at full cost, they can always go to the direct market and do that. They just may not be able to get financial help to be able to do that.
Am I correct in my memory that, that if a person is eligible for a public program under the circumstances that we're struggling with right now, and they choose not to do that, they lose their right to the tax credits? Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
That's correct. I haven't, and they can still apply through the exchange.
They can, although they're, the way that, the way that the federal law is structured, if you're eligible for a public health insurance program, tax credits kick in after the eligibility for those programs ends. And so you would likely not be eligible for any assistance because you wouldn't fall into the tax credit portion of the, of the way the law is structured at the federal level. So you'd be able to buy coverage, you would just have to buy it at full cost outside the exchange without, or you can buy it at full cost outside the exchange as well, but just without coverage.
Or you'd still buy coverage inside the exchange? You'd still buy coverage inside the exchange?
You certainly can still buy coverage. It's just the ability to get financial help to do it would likely be limited.
Sure.
Okay, I have some written ones here. Let me, let me give a couple, and then I'll have Clark give you the mic. We asked for some written ones. How do you find out what your subsidy is for 2015 if already enrolled in 2014?
So if you're enrolled in MinSure right now, there's two things to, to consider here. The first is that if your plan, if you're one of the people who enrolled, for example, in Preferred One, and your plan is no longer on the exchange, what we'll be asking people to do is to come back through and to update your information in the system. And that, that will likely mean you'll go log into your account and go through the application process, and what that will do is to trigger a 2015 amount of credit, and it'll apply against whatever policy that you're choosing in the exchange. So that, that, that will happen. If you're a person whose policy is still available on the exchange, and, and because, and, and there aren't, there are about 80% of the people who enrolled through MinSure last year on the commercial side, the qualified health plan side, their products are no longer available because so many people enrolled in Preferred One because they're low premiums. So for the remaining 20% of the people whose policy is still available on the exchange, you have, we're still going to encourage you to come back through, update your information. That'll trigger a new updated 2015 tax credit amount. But if you choose not to take an action, you'll be auto-enrolled into your existing plan at your 2014 tax credit amount. And what we'll be doing, starting in the winter, is going back in, updating those 2014 tax credit amounts for people whose products were still available to 2015 amounts, and then that'll be, that'll be credited back to your account. So you'll always get the, you'll always get the 2015 amount. It's just the initial enrollment, if you choose that to take an action, will be at your 2014 tax credit amount.
Does everyone already signed up in 2014, need to reapply in 2015?
For people who, so I'm, I'm speaking again for the commercial plans, as, as Nathan mentioned, for, for folks who are enrolled in Minnesota Care or Medicaid, stay tight, hang tight, DHS will be reaching out to you and giving you instructions into the future on how to do your enrollment. For people who enrolled in a commercial health plan, if you were enrolled in a product that's still available on the exchange, then that's that 20% that I mentioned of folks. You, we, we would like you to come back through and update your information, meaning fill out a new application. That'll allow us to get you, get you an updated tax credit amount for 2015. You don't have to do that, though. If you choose not to do that, you will auto-enroll into your policy moving forward. For the people whose product isn't available, we will need you to come back through, get an updated, fill out a new application, get updated information, and that allows us to get the most financial help available. And by the way, if you bought off the exchange last year, meaning that you did, you, if the system wasn't working well in October, November, and you said, "Screw it, I'm just going to go buy directly from a carrier," you kind of owe it to yourself. I mean, I'm working, arguing pretty hard, come back through anyway, because, because of the way the premiums went up in the marketplace this year, it's likely that there's some financial help available for you this year, even if you didn't get it last year. Preferred One's premiums were so low last year that, that prevented a lot of people from getting financial help. That's going to look a little different this year. The system's better. We encourage you to come back through and just get that information updated, fill out a new application, and get as much financial help as you can to lower those premium levels.
If we get a tax credit, can we go to a broker and have them do all the paperwork and everything?
You absolutely can work with a broker, and we would encourage you to seek that assistance and help if you, if that's something you'd like to have. They're, they're, they're experts and they know the systems well, but you absolutely can work with them through the system. And if you're eligible for a tax credit, you'll still get that tax credit working with them.
I have one more question also. What does the tax credit do to your tax return? Anything?
So there's a process that we, so for people who, back up for just a second. The, the way the federal law is structured, for people who, people can get financial help on the exchange if their incomes are up to, I'm going to use a federal poverty level, up to 400% in federal poverty level, which is, Nathan probably knows what that translates into.
About $86,000 for a family of four.
Something like that. You get financial, and, and it phases down as, as your income rises. And there's two ways you can get that tax, that tax credit. You can get what's called an advanced premium tax credit, or you'll hear the acronym APTC. That's where the money is fronted, and you get that money upfront, and, and then you buy your policy. And then what happens at the end of your tax year, at the end of the year, is that you, depending on which policy you bought, and what your credit was that was applied against, and what your actual income was, there's what's called a reconciliation process that will occur on your tax forms. And we'll be sending out in, in February, forms to everybody who got a tax credit. They're called 1095 forms, working as many acronyms as I can here, 1095 forms. Those will indicate what your actual tax credit amounts were based on, what you received. And then as you file your taxes, that'll be reconciled as you file that against what you actually should have received. And you'll either get a refund, or it'll be, or it'll be the exact same amount, or it'll be, you know, it, we, it'll just depend on what your situation is, but it'll be part of the tax filing system this year that that will be handled on. We're going to be working to get information out. We know this is going to be a new process for everybody, and every time we go through a new process, it can be confusing for folks. So we're going to be working at the MinSure level as an organization with some outside tax filing organizations. Our call center will be, they're not going to be tax experts in our call center, but our call center is going to be knowledgeable about where to, where to send people if they're looking for help around how to file, because we know this is going to be sort of a new thing for people this year. So more to come on that, but that, in a nutshell, is kind of the way it's going to work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the broker line. It's been fabulous. I'm on a first-name basis with a lot of people there, and they're knowledgeable, generally know the answer, and that's been fabulous. My son lives in Colorado. I set him up on the Colorado Connect website, and their music, they don't have music. They say, "Hey, why don't you get ahold of our broker? We have this many brokers in the state that can help you." So that would be a suggestion. My last comment is, the special enrollment period has been a disaster for so many of my clients. I have two files right here.
What's the special enrollment period, Mary?
The, because the door was shut March 31st for people to get insurance. The only way that they can get back, they can get an insurance policy is if they got married, they lost their job, they adopted a child, whatever. I have two files right here that are September 1st. We still don't have them to the company. And I know that they're stuck here, and I heard, I heard the new term, "Stuck member list." They're on the stuck member list, and it's so frustrating. I'm getting phone calls weekly, "Well, what have you found out? What have you found out? What are we doing with those people that are stuck?"
So the, what Mary's referring to is, when the open enrollment period ended on March 31st, that was sort of when you could come through and buy coverage from directly, either through MinSure or outside of MinSure. And then once that open enrollment period ended, you weren't eligible to get coverage anymore, unless you were either A, eligible for one of Nathan's public insurance programs, B, if you were a member of a Native American tribe, which was part of the federal law, or C, if you had a circumstance change. So as was mentioned, if you, if you had a baby, if you had a change of address, if you, if you had, if you got married and you're adding a spouse, that sort of thing to your policy, you are eligible to enroll during, outside of the open enrollment period, during what are called special enrollment periods, or SEPs, as they're sometimes referred to. And what's, what's also being referred to is that's been a challenge this year. And the reason it's been a challenge is because the system that's been built right now, for all the improvements that I mentioned, and you'll see them as you come through, one of the things that the system can handle right now are those, are those changes. And so we have to manually do those changes in the system, and they're very complicated to do, and they take a long time. And so where we're at on the processing of them is that we, on the, on the, on the commercial insurer side, have gone through about 13,000 of those changes so far. We have around 1,700 left to move through. We've prioritized ones which are additions to coverage because of those, those are the most important ones, babies and other things. But there are a number of other ones that we need to work through. And if you actually have information, have your, have your clients sign off to give it to us, I'd be happy to take those back, and we can usually work those through fairly quickly if we know something about them. Lots of people contact me about moving these things through, and I think it's been frustrating for people that have to wait for coverage. It's retroactive, so they will get the coverage, but it has been a source of frustration. It's a piece of, of functionality that will be available sometime during 2015. This will go away hopefully at the end of open enrollment, we'll have that functionality available. But it's been a slower build-up than any of us would have liked. And so we just acknowledge that it's been frustrating. We're working hard. We've added a lot of staff to be able to kind of move these people through and, and into coverage. So I commiserate with your clients. I can certainly understand the frustration. Feel free to chat with me afterwards, and we'll see what we can do to get them in.
Because of MinSure, I recently, recently lost my insurance through my employer, so a lot of this is very new to me. A lot of questions. It's, it's a confusing system. Do we know if we qualify for the benefits, or the, the credits? And how do we know? And is that based, his insurance is paid through by his employer. I am no longer, will be insured by 1st of January. Does the credit go by our household income, or does I go by your individual income?
So what I would encourage you to, have you been to this, have you been to the system yet, or have you been able to create an account or anything? So what I would, gotcha. So a couple of things. First of all, it's, as you can imagine, and your question, I think captures some of the complexity of this thing, because you, you're a spouse with coverage, you are no longer eligible, it sounds like, for your employer's coverage. And what you'll want to do is to come into this, come into the system, get an application filled out. The way that, that we are able to trigger a calculation of the amount of tax credit that's available to you is by doing that application. And what, what that does is it, Nathan used the technical term ping earlier. It pings against the federal data system, which, which then allows us to get information back, which then allows us to calculate out what that tax credit would, would be. In your circumstance, I believe it'll count against your, against the income of you, but it does depend on the, on a lot of factors, and which are all sort of programmed into the system. So I would really encourage, as a starting point for you, to do, to get an application going in the system. I would also encourage you, as you do that, you'll be enrolling during a special enrollment period, because we haven't yet entered the open enrollment period. Now you will be able to, if you want coverage, for example, for November, December of this year for like two months. If you want to just do it for January, you can come in starting November 15th for the new open enrollment period, which you may wish to do. And please feel free to, I mean, our call center is really there to be able to assist folks like you, work with a broker, work with a navigator. They know the rules of air pretty well on this stuff, and we should be able to work you through that, that process. Again, if you want to figure out who's available in your area to help you with this, we do have a searchable list of folks, and it's, it's pretty good. Actually, when I looked at it, it wasn't so good last year. It's a lot better this year. Let's just put in your zip code, say what the radius is that you want to search in, and we'll return all the people who are available to assist. And in a lot of cases, you'll want to make an appointment with them, come in, sit down with them. They can help you one-on-one work that through. In your circumstance, because it's a little more complicated, that might be a route that you want to follow in, in doing that.
Can I just add to that, too? That as, as folks have come in thinking that they were going to get a tax credit and shop for a qualified health plan, I think folks were surprised to the extent that they actually qualified for some of the public health programs. So that, that's really the beauty of this, of this singles, sort of cyanide system, is that you're going to come in, and it's going to sort out all of that information. It's going to take all the household information, and it's going to sort through what you're going to qualify for, everything from, from Medicaid all the way up through a tax credit. So I would, I would really emphasize Scott's point about just going to the system and letting it determine what you're eligible for, and you may be surprised. The other thing that's important to understand, too, is that we do have different rules under the public health program. So we, we're not, we don't have necessarily all the same constraints about when you can and can't come into the system. You know, if it's June and you qualify for a public health program, you can come in in June. So it's one of the pieces that I think that's going to be a bit of a challenge for us to message, you know, as we think about really people shopping across the spectrum of products and, and, you know, and assistance that's available. But, but, but we'll get there. But in your case, I would say, again, yeah, come to the system, and perhaps we may be able to help you on the DHS side as much as Scott's programs can help you on the MinSure side.
I've got the mic, so I decided to ask a question.
So it usually works.
Does somebody else have a question? We'll get the mic to you in between.
Okay. Oh, um, two, I've got two questions. First of all, I am curious about why the MinSure application process doesn't asset test. The gentleman down here was talking about these clients who apparently are very wealthy, but income poor. And I imagine that there may be people out there who are less civic-minded than his clients are, who would say, "Hey, this is a good thing. I get really cheap insurance, so I've got all this, you know, all these assets, but I have low income." Why doesn't MinSure have some kind of asset testing mechanism to look at that? That's my first question. The second one's a little more complicated. It has something to do with Mary's comment about open enrollment. I have another friend, that's my two friends. And this person signed up in MinSure and unfortunately failed to make two premiums, and then was kicked off. She can't get back onto MinSure. She wouldn't qualify outside of MinSure because she has pre-existing medical conditions. So she has no medical insurance right now, which is bad for two reasons. Number one, she's breaking the law, being she's supposed to have medical insurance. And number two, if something happens to her, she has no medical insurance. Why do you have these open enrollment programs? Why do you limit when you can enroll, and why can't you let people get back in in situations like this? So those are my two questions.
Gotcha. Let me start with the first one. Nathan may wish to add to it, but I'll, but I'll start. The, the questions about asset tests are really driven by the way that the federal law was, is structured. Federal law, which states follow, you know, the Medicaid program is a federally set program, but administered at the state level. So we really have to follow what the federal rules are with regards to it. And what they, what the federal law established as new eligibility criteria for folks who would be sort of eligible, the non-disabled people who would be eligible for, for Medicaid, was following a new set of guidelines called the MAGI, or Modified Adjusted Gross Income Guidelines. I'm taking you down a little bit into the weeds, but the question is a little bit in the weeds. And the, and, and what those MAGI guidelines basically is, they did away with the asset tests. And so we're really following what the federal structure is with it. We don't really have flexibility in that area. I think that's an issue for Congress to maybe look at, you know, it, it, but that's, I think the short answer to your question, Nathan.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would sum it up as that, that's a public policy question. And so we're, we, we set up the system based on what policymakers have determined is how they want to establish eligibility.
And, and, yeah, and that's an important point, actually. I mean, I think MinSure as an organization really follows, we're, we're a marketplace, so whatever the marketplace rules are, meaning on the commercial side or on the public program side, we just allow people to, we're an enrollment mechanism, but we don't really set policy that way. That's something that's established by either state legislatures or Congress at the federal level. And that kind of gets to your second question, which is, in your, in your friend's circumstance, once a person has enrolled into coverage and is starting to make payment, we, as, as MinSure as an organization, we're bound by the open enrollment periods that are, that are set at the federal level. So this year, last year was an open enrollment period from October through March. This year, it's an open enrollment period from November 15th through February 15th of next year, a three-month period. And then enrollment isn't allowed sort of outside those periods unless it's, unless it's a change of circumstance or, or otherwise, you know, that would occur eligibility for a public insurance program. And then once, once people enroll through MinSure, their responsibility is sort of to make the premium payments to the carriers that they're with, and if they're not made, I believe that's a, that would be, that becomes between the carrier and the individual in terms of, you know, keeping them on coverage or giving them grace periods and so forth. And each carrier, I think, does that a little bit differently. And then unfortunately, for good or for ill, I think what applies to those individuals then if they lose their coverage is whatever the federal terms are with regards to when open enrollment periods are. So that, I think your friend is kind of just caught in that situation right now. I don't disagree that it's unfortunate, because we really do want people to be in and maintain coverage. You know, they obviously can always check for their eligibility for a public health insurance program, such as Minnesota Care or Medicaid, and if their incomes are such that they're eligible for those, they can enroll those. And if their incomes are such that they're eligible for those, they can enroll those, as Nathan said, year-round. So I guess in that specific situation, I would really just encourage them to see whether they're eligible for those, because I don't disagree with you, making sure that they have continuity of coverage is really important.
Thank you for coming out today and meeting with us about this important topic. I work for Nicola County Social Services and so the population of folks I work with are Nathan's folks, Medicaid and MinSure. And I wanted to thank you also for beginning to loosen up the process of our local financial eligibility workers taking applications. We're not able to do that for certain populations of folks. I just want to encourage you to continue to allow our local financial workers to process applications, renew applications. And I say that for two reasons. Mary's comment about being able to connect with brokers at DHS, people she now knows on a first-name basis. I think those relationships that people have are really important to getting the answers that they need. And that our population, I work with adult mental health and chemical dependency, and our folks are primarily relying on health insurance to pay for almost all of the services, medications, therapy, you know, home care, chemical dependency treatment. And so it's really critical that we not have breaks in coverage and that we can work together to assure speedy applications, processing and that kind of thing. So I appreciate some of that happening and look forward to being able to use, well-trained. We have some folks that, 30 years they've done this job, they know the rules inside and out, pretty clear. So just want to encourage that, that process, the local control and local ability to be able to take and process applications. Thanks.
Yes, I had a couple I was working with trying to sign them up for MinSure. And he already had established an account, tried to sign in to make changes to his account and that was just not possible. Is that something that they're working on now where they can go in and change their current income? I mean, how do you go about making changes to a person's account?
Yeah, I would, in that case, I would encourage the person that you're mentioning to contact our call center. They can typically make those updated changes. And then if they're currently in the system, would really encourage them after November 15th, when you knew open enrollment periods. If they're in a qualified health plan, a commercial plan, to come back through and just go through the process of filling out new information. If their information has changed and needs to be updated, they can do that starting November 15th. Otherwise, I would encourage them to contact our call center in the meantime if they want to do it sometime this week and the contact center can help them with that.
Do you foresee a lot of the small groups, main groups under 50 possibly giving up their group coverage due to high cost, particularly when they get in like 55 to 65, the rates are really, really high? Do you foresee a lot of those just giving up then and going in the individual, whether it's the exchange or direct?
I'm guessing some of our broker folks in the audience probably have some thoughts on that. It's pure speculation, it would be pure speculation to know. I think that small businesses always have struggled a little bit to offer coverage, they're smaller, they don't have as big a bottom line. I have to say them small employers in Minnesota are pretty remarkable in the degree to which they do offer benefits to their employees. It's a pretty amazing thing when you look around the country. We're one of those states where small employers have really, in a lot of cases, in spite of the challenges that they have, stepped up and offered coverage. But some of them, you know, as they examine their own bottom lines and figure out what their future may wish to phase down some of that coverage, we're not encouraging that or anything. We're just a marketplace that's available for people. And small employers will obviously need to make decisions as they need to with regards to keeping coverage or making other decisions. Like, I don't know if you guys in the broker world have any thoughts in there, what you're seeing.
Hold on, we have another person. Mary, were you going to speak to this issue before? Okay, we'll go back over here.
I want to thank this forum today too, because I'm coming from the law and I can only hope that my two legislators would maybe do something like this over there. My question is future Supreme Court decisions, whether it's the legality of tax credits or subsidies, will that affect MinSure and how they operate?
That's a good question. So let me kind of ground folks in what I think the question is. There, the Supreme Court announced yesterday that they would be taking up a case, or cases that were challenging the constitutionality of tax credits. What's really being challenged in those cases is the way that the law was written is a little bit fuzzy in this sense. It's very clear under the law that states that establish health insurance exchanges, that the tax credits available through those exchanges are constitutional. What the cases are challenging is whether or not people receiving tax credits through healthcare.gov, the federal exchange, whether that's constitutional. And the reason it's being looked at is because the law was written in a way that really referenced tax credits being available in state exchanges and didn't, and I think because the constructors of the law really envisioned that most states would probably, or all states would set up exchanges and it turned out only 15 or so did. And so that was something that really was never addressed in the law. There are competing, conflicting lower court rulings on this issue and what the Supreme Court has decided to do is to take up the case to settle it. Long answer to your question, which is no, it won't affect Minnesota because we have a state-based exchange.
I just wanted to say something real quick about Herb's question about why people can't get in the door now, the door is shut after March 31st unless you have that special enrollment period. The way that I explain it to my clients is, and we use that term, jump and dump. You know, we don't want, what's important is that everybody buy insurance so that, you know, we have that pool of money. We don't want somebody coming in May 1st because they just found out that they had cancer and they don't have insurance. And then we pay all of their bills because there's no pre-existing conditions on the policy. Then they get everything all taken care of and then they dump the plan. That's not going to work for us. So that's how I explain it.
That's well explained, thank you.
Dump and jump.
Another technical term.
Feel free to use. Any other questions? Did we? Yes.
I've got a few. The small business premium tax credit, is that a federal only or will that be a federal and a state credit?
That's a good question. I think you might have gotten me right on the tail end. Time's up, yeah. Yeah, the question was whether the small business tax credit is both a federal and a state credit or if it's just a federal credit. And I believe it's just a federal credit is the answer, I think the answer, but I think you might have kind of got me on that one.
Okay. And then we have many small companies that are either an S corp or an LLC. Are any plumbers, carpenters, consultants, scats on the state? Many of them are the only employee, W-2 employee of their little company. So does that person enter the site, does he have to enter the site as a small business entity and as an individual? Does he have to do both?
They would enter as an individual in those cases.
Really?
Yeah.
But if they enter as an individual, how would they get the small business tax credit if their business entity is paying their W-2 wages?
They would, they would enter as an individual and they would be eligible for the tax credits that are available to them as a, you know, they would apply whatever the wages are that are being paid by their corporation to them against the eligibility rules as individuals for either Medicaid, Minnesota Care, tax credits in the commercial market, or if their incomes are high enough, you know, coverage without a credit.
Well, it's complicated, let's say it's...
Because that wasn't complicated.
Well, it's complicated. Typically, a small family business, maybe you have several employees that are family members, but they are an entity, they're a C corp and S corp and LLC and LLP. The business wants those credits and the business is probably paying the family members a respectable wage, but is it possible a business would get some credits and the individuals going on is, might get some credit?
I think you're, I think the answer is likely...
You can't double them.
You can't double, yeah, you wouldn't be able to get both of those. I think you'd be, it would be one or the other. But I guess what I don't know for certain is whether it would be, and you may have a choice in this matter, I don't know. You know, you could come in as a small business, get the small business tax credit, do it that way, or to have the folks come through as individuals or as a family and find out what's eligible, what they're eligible for as a family on the, you know, the MinSure individual market side, but not both.
This is a tremendous source, I work with, I do consulting work with farmers and a few small businesses, tremendous source of concern and uncertainty to them. And I really don't give them an answer, but today I could.
Yeah, well, we can talk afterwards and I would be happy to hook you up with some staff back at MinSure who can help sort through some of those questions. I don't think I have specific knowledge on all of it, but happy to hook you up with folks back at the office who do.
And then another question, why do local agents help people enroll through MinSure if they're not going to get the business? Is there some compensation for them to help them?
Yeah, the compensation that individual agents get is really negotiated between them and the carriers. We're a marketplace. We facilitate enrollment through that. So if they help folks come through MinSure, we're working out the details on how to make sure agent of record and other things works better than it is currently. But the bottom line is, the goal is to make sure that the agents who are helping people enroll either through MinSure or outside of MinSure, they get compensated directly with, from the carriers and based on the agreements that they have with the carriers who operate through MinSure or outside the market.
So as an individual, if I go on the site after November 25th, 15th, November 15th, I talk to no agent, I enroll my spouse, we do it ourselves, we get coverage. What's there between that and me going to my local agent who could review solve this? My premium is the same either way. But if I go to my local agent, they might get a little something for their trouble?
That's right. Yeah, the insurer, we work with them to, I mean, part of the work and the benefit that brokers bring is being able to help people navigate through a pretty complex system even before MinSure. Hopefully it'll get easier over time, but, so the bottom line is they get a little bit of compensation for the work that they do to help enroll people in. If you as an individual decide to go directly, you certainly have that option as well.
And then my last big question, if Minnesota, I understand why Minnesota might have elected to take those funds and improve their IT infrastructure, but if we had gone with healthcare.gov, wouldn't this have been simpler for us and wouldn't we have a lot more choices? Wouldn't we have 15 or 20 choices instead of two or three?
No, I think the marketplace rules are still set at every individual state level. And so you're going to be purchasing coverage from carriers that are licensed within the state, whether you're on MinSure or whether we've gone to healthcare.gov. It's really up to the carriers around the country to decide where they want to do their business and what makes sense for them, which markets it makes sense for them to enter into or not. And so really underneath, whether it's, you know, MinSure or healthcare.gov, it's really governed by the local, local insurance rules and the local carriers who are actually licensed to do business in that state.
Mr. Lees, if I could ask, I think the question that he was asking regarding, I'm thinking particularly farmers and these heifer arrangements, I think once you have a better response to that, I would encourage you to make that public and actually distribute that to farm organizations and others and small business organizations, because I think it is a general question that I'm also hearing.
For sure, I did, one of the great, fun things I did is somewhere was to go to Farm Fest and I learned a lot about, I do, I thought I knew quite a bit because I grew up rural, but I learned a lot sort of, you know, some of the specific challenges that farm families in particular are facing because of the complex, in many cases, complex nature of the business arrangements that they have and so forth. So you're absolutely right, it's a very legitimate concern that farm families have and others as well, small, small businesses too. So I'm happy to work with you to get you information you need to help them out.
Maybe can I add, so at the risk of perhaps getting stumped myself, so my assumption would be that if the company is offering, maybe I'm going to, this to you, if the company is offering a health benefit that meets a certain threshold, then those folks then are ineligible at the individual tax credit level, correct? So that's sort of how you avoid the double dipping. So if any entity as an employer offers coverage that meets a certain level of coverage, has a certain standard of coverage, okay, anybody, any of us, okay, whether you're working for a Medicaid or State University or whether you're working for a small farm company, if the, as the employer, if they're offering the coverage and it's comparable coverage, comprehensive coverage, then you are not eligible for a tax credit no matter what. So that's how you would, I think, avoid the double dipping. So either, you know, but because it's a family structure, they maybe have the advantage to decide, do we as individuals come out ahead going through the individual market or do we as a group of individuals do better sort of sponsoring ourselves? You know, and that's, it's a very unique piece because they're in control of both the group market and the individual market as an employer. So that they can, you know, most of us wouldn't have that luxury to decide whether our employers can offer us coverage or not. Does that help? Do I get that right, Scott?
It's all good.
We have a question in the back and then I'll...
I guess I got a request for the two gentlemen in front. As a broker, over the past year, probably half, two-thirds of the people that I enrolled are medical assistants or Minnesota Care, as you guys have stated very clearly. One issue I have with that is as a broker, like you said, we get paid through the companies. When we sit and spend, unfortunately there are staffers, five and six hours trying to navigate the system with people that end up on the medical assistance, we get nothing as brokers in that situation. I would request from that standpoint that, you know, you told several people here today that if you have questions, go and ask for a broker to help with that. I'm fine helping them, but it would be nice, you know, there's navigators get paid for helping those people. They get a stipend or whatever it is. Work through a process somehow so that you can help out the brokers that are doing that same process for free. We don't live for free either, so.
Request heard and that is something that is a valid point.
Can you define navigator and broker differential between those two?
So broker, when I'm talking about brokers, agents, you all are licensed by the Department of Commerce. You go through a certification process through, and our, my colleagues who are up here previously from the Department of Commerce have a responsibility for licensing producers, which is the agent world, the broker agent world. And it's traditionally what we've, where folks have worked, either as small businesses or individuals or as businesses broadly, to get, work through coverage and they work directly with the carriers to get folks into coverage and are typically compensated for the work that they're doing to get those individuals enrolled. The navigator was a sort of a new kind of construct of the Affordable Care Act and it was really meant to allow local individuals, that might be community-based organizations like social service agencies, like churches, like other types of entities that sort of help individuals enroll into health insurance coverage, but they're not licensed brokers or agents. And one of the things that was just raised, I think, is that the navigators are paid on a per-enrollee basis, so when they bring people into coverage, they get a small stipend for doing that. And one of the challenges that we have in the system right now, as is pointed out, is that as brokers and agents bring folks into commercial coverage, they have arrangements that are set up with the, with the carriers to compensate them for that or for the work that they are legitimately doing. But on, when they bring people into Minnesota Care and Medicaid, there isn't a mechanism to do that compensation. And in many cases, you don't know when a person comes into your office whether they're Medicaid eligible, Minnesota Care eligible, or for commercial policy eligible. So you go through the work of helping them get enrolled, great work, thank you very much, and then you don't get compensated for it. And it is sort of an unfair piece of the system right now and I think it's legitimate that we look at how we can, you know, moving forward, think about ways to make that a little bit fairer. I don't have any great answers today and I don't, maybe Nathan does, but I think it's, you raise a very legitimate point.
I want to make a comment on the question about the assets, getting back to that. I have spoken to our Congressman, Senator Tim Walz on it. He agrees that it was not well-written and that there needs to be something, but there's not much of an appetite at the federal level to change that. I asked him, are the states eligible to make a change? And he says the law's kind of fuzzy. And I would encourage Kathy and I've contacted other legislatures and they seem to think that we can institute that at a state level, some sort of asset deal. So, you know, everybody here, contact, you know, Kathy and other people and encourage that, because we don't need millionaires, that's going to break the system. that, because we don't need millionaires. That's going to break the system. The other comment that I have, and this is more of a question for Kathy, Matt is right. He said we signed up 375,000 people, of which 60,000 were on the private marketplace, at least 315,000 people newly on medical assistance in Minnesota Care. The federal government was going to assist the states for two years on just the people that are newly eligible under the new expansion guidelines. So they're not helping out with the people that were currently eligible but hadn't signed up. How's the state going to afford 315,000 new people on medical assistance in another year? And that's going to be a big question. We had a surplus and we spent it. Now we're, now we're going to have to struggle with 315,000. That's going to be a billion-dollar-plus expenditure for the state.
I just want to check the...
We could ground a little bit.
Yeah, let's, let's check the, the situation about the separation of the newly enrolled versus, what we're talking about is the opportunity that we took in the state of Minnesota to, to include more people in our public programs beyond a certain poverty level. And the federal government would pay a substantial portion of the costs of that. And we saw huge value in being able to get more people into these public programs with our federal tax dollars coming back to us finally, because we get much less back from the federal government than we give the federal government. So this was a way to bring some more of our federal dollars back into the state and at a very low cost to us as taxpayers in the state of Minnesota. So the question is whether or not that changes in two years. And if it does, what, how are we going to manage that? And one of the clear things about, that we said when we passed expansion of Medicaid is that we didn't have to continue to expand Medicaid. If the federal government withdraws its commitment to this newly enrolled group of people and we don't have a capacity to pay for, we don't have to continue to do that. That's the bottom line on this. But the question is whether or not, I have not heard that the federal government is or isn't going to withdraw from their obligation at that point.
Yeah, and I can just maybe add a couple things, Senator, to that Nathan may wish to as well. What the, the way that the Medicaid expansion portion of the law was written was that states had the option, Supreme Court, when the Supreme Court did its ruling back of July or so ago, July and a half ago, I guess, on the Constitutionally Affordable Care Act, they said that the law was, was constitutional and the requirement to have insurance was constitutional. But the requirement that states expand Medicaid was optional. And so some states took it up and some states didn't. Minnesota, we believe for a lot of reasons that Senator Sharon pointed out, did. And what, what, but the, the advantage of doing that was that the Medicaid expansion that was in the law was fully federally funded, beating 100% of the costs of individuals coming in who are newly eligible under that expansion. Their costs are fully covered by the federal government for the first three years. And then what happens is that the portion of the federal government begins to phase down slowly through the year 2019, but it never goes below 90% of the costs. So almost all the costs of those individuals are covered by the federal government, and they will continue to be into the future. And Senator Sharon said, there was a law that was specifically put in in Minnesota that said if the federal government backs off from that, we then now have the, that there would be a trigger that would require the legislature to relook at that issue and that wouldn't require us to do that. So that's kind of what I have to know about that, Nathan.
I'd like to comment on that too, because let's remember that part of, a lot of the whole, and I'll acknowledge it's, it's speculation and hope, but I think we will know through practice, is that the cost of healthcare should go down as more people access preventative care. And we can't see that yet, but over time, we should be able to monitor that. And I would expect that certainly in the legislature, we're going to be interested in doing that. And if we see that demonstration, that should be able to help us pick up that 10%. And so if this works as promised, we will see some of the care, some of the changes. And bending that cost curve is absolutely essential. It goes back to who we started with today. And part of these changes are in an attempt to bend the cost curve on healthcare. And if we can be successful with that, we will all like that result as consumers. All Minnesota's will benefit.
Any more questions? Well, I just have to say thank you to all of you for those fabulous questions. You know, our region of the state is getting a good reputation when we have smart folks from the St. Paul area coming down, that you come out and challenge them with your questions and offer our community the chance to get the facts and to become informed. So thank you very much for giving your Saturday morning. And thank you, of course, to the people who work for us at the state level. They gave up their Saturday to come down here. And I think we ought to thank them with a round of applause.